Why I have to drink?
Walking to an oath.
It's itch.
Awesome.
I like that. I wish it would.
That mom told you about it.
You should come down here and see.
That you have.
You didn't look at that?
No, no, that's fine, but it doesn't count.
No, okay.
I will.
After July 1st.
Okay.
So come down here.
But yeah, no, that's fine. I just sent you the thing.
That was really good. Yeah, come over here. You're running over it.
I don't know. I know nobody is coming here. I know she's had some sickness going.
Well, she's down there.
Oh!
That's why I asked her, who's that?
She said, Dr. Kohler, she was dying.
Why? He told me I had loose thirteen lungs. Is that me some die?
It's like there. Down there, he's probably have to go to the air media.
I'm gonna pay more attention to that. It's true.
Correct. Okay, she's got this.
No.
This will be our copy.
Please do. But yeah, this one, it's all good.
Is that guy living in that camper?
Hmm?
Is that guy living in that camper?
I do not believe so. Keep in mind, it's in front of your house. I haven't seen anybody going in the night.
Haven't either. Just in camper and motorcycle.
I seen motorcycle over there a couple days. I seen people drive up to their work. I seen blocking the street.
She's not waking up in your community.
I'm not tired.
I'll look up evidently.
She's in the middle of her thing.
Who's she?
Andy.
Yeah, well, I mean, she's... You give her a couple minutes, but she... I text her. You call her, but...
So she's from Miami, yes.
You just throw a bone in the fork, right?
Yep, pretty much. They are good.
I believe. Well, I guess you can start when she shows up. I mean, we...
What you want me to do? Get a phone.
You got it for us.
Okay. All this meeting order at 7:02. Rule call.
For small.
Eric Burton.
Sean Harlan.
Randy Snead.
Derek Jones.
Lisa Lyle.
Stand up, pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes, 3:16, 2022, regular session.
Hi.
John Beckman.
Yeah, Ruben.
Good evening.
What guys? I just asked you.
Oops.
Sorry.
No, I was thinking, my hood locks. It's okay.
And you wonder why you look at something or you talk about something and the next day...
Yeah, then we were talking about... Gunner got sick right after her, and I thought I was gonna get it, and so far.
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes from 3:16, 2022, regular session. Any further comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Minutes passed. Citizens input. Any citizens have any input?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I was just here tonight to see if there's any conversation about having another disability parking spot down by the B in our building. I talked to Lisa about it.
This is the first time Frank, since we talked, that they've been together. So I talked to Jamie about it today, but he was gonna look at it. The rail services would like a van accessible parking spot down there.
That one has to be parallel to the sidewalk or whatever, right?
Yeah, and, well, I don't know if it needs to be parallel, but it has to have like nine on one side of it to open the door. And then, right, and then cut the curb to make another parking for the handicap.
Weird, Frank.
Right. Really, all that I was... It comes back to me that the only thing that's needed is not van accessible. There's only one person that comes down there to mealtime every once in a while. But the thing is, is to just have another, just parking spot. That's all that I think is required. So it doesn't have to be van accessible. Just one parking spot.
Is that just a matter of some blue paint and that stencil out there?
I would think if we're just looking at another handicap parking spot, that's what I would guess.
I don't see why they can't do that. I don't wanna see cutting the curb and stuff because we don't know where the future's gonna go on that. But I don't see nothing wrong with avenue way down there when the weather's nice and painting the stripes and, you know.
I think we got a stencil for it. I'll look.
I agree with Randy. I have no problem with doing a painting and that, but I don't wanna put any cost of money or anything in that until we know what we're doing for the future with that.
Yeah, okay. We can do that, Frank. We can do that. It's gonna have to, you know, it's gonna have to get some nicer weather, but...
Yes.
Okay. We need a vote to do it, paint it.
It wouldn't hurt.
Wouldn't hurt.
Make a motion to approve Jamie to have the town look at adding a handicap accessible parking spot as long as it only includes painting to signify the markings of that spot. With the hard limit of painting only. Anything that would cause additional cost in that, we need further discussion.
Where we doing that?
To be in our...
To be in our building.
Okay.
Sorry, Derek.
We have a motion and a second to add a handicap parking spot at the BNR building with the... There would be nothing but just painting and putting the stencil down. We won't do any curb or any changing or anything. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Anything else, Frank?
No.
Okay. Old business, attorney report.
Okay, if you think it's just to kinda bring you up to speed or update you on, if you recall, I think it was two meetings ago, we talked about sending a letter to Republic Waste. The girls in the office have been, it looks like, sending or gathering a lot of information because I got a list of a lot of violations in terms of dates, where things occurred. And so now that we have that, that letter's gonna be going out here within, well, before the next meeting. So just to let you know about that. Regarding utility building, the bids, or I'm sorry, the invitation for bids has been published. Let me find this. Yeah, published in the pilot on March 19th, March 26th. We are scheduled to open bids on April 18th, which is a Monday. The bids would be potentially decided upon at the meeting we have on the 20th. So just to let you know again, that's coming up. Be ready for that. We have the Mora property that was let out for bids in terms of cleaning it up, fixing it up. I know that we've kind of done this twice. There was a subsequent bid that was let out. I don't know if that work's been complete, if we're ready to move forward. And this is kind of a, I'm not gonna say necessarily a Lisa question, but I'm just saying, hey, it's still out there, and if that work has been completed, then we need to move forward.
Went by this weekend, the shed was still there.
As far as I know, the wind pretty much destroyed that building, that tarp.
Well, Kohler was supposed to... Kohler submitted a subsequent bid, so has he been out to do the work or no?
I don't think he's been there to do any of that yet.
So then we're just... Since Saturday.
Yeah, I know he's been lighting it in the green, so...
Waiting on that to get done. That's fine, but again, just don't wanna let it drop through the cracks. The other thing that we have, kind of still on the table, is this Cordill property. Nathan had sent an email back on March 21 and was talking about an issue with being able to get windows. And I think George had replied to say, can you get us any documentation about the delay and when that may occur? As things currently stand, we're at the deadline of the end of April. And yes, I know we've extended this deadline, but I also feel like that he's continued to work on a property. I'm only bringing it up, not saying that we have to do anything tonight because it's not the end of April. I don't know of any response that anybody's received, but I just wanna bring it to your attention that he's made that request. He's asked for an extension until May 15. And I'm not even saying that we need to necessarily do anything or take any action with that. We can kind of see where things are at the next meeting, but just wanna keep it on the radar in terms of moving that forward. But again, I do feel like, from what I've heard, he's done a fair job of working on.
Did you get an email back from the siding company?
Okay.
It states that their delivery to issues, building industry, but we understand this ultimately is creating delays in our customers. We thank you for patience and understanding, and it says, "Your windows have been on order since December 2021, and we hope to have delivery date soon." I'll reach out to Greg once we have confirmed the expected delivery date. D.L.O.A., owner of LT Siding Window Doors.
Do you get forward that to me at some point? That'd be great. I'll just print it up, put it in the file. And again, no decision has to be made, it's just, you know, one of these, we don't wanna let it slip through the cracks without having a resolution to it.
I kinda agree, Derek. I feel, you know, there is a line of communication going on here, so I'm comfortable with that at this point.
Especially if you order it in December.
What's going on?
Can't really, too much. I make a motion to accept their attorney's report.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second to accept attorney report. Any further comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Other old businesses. Anything else that we...
Yes.
Go ahead, George.
Jamie had asked us about spending on it last May, $25,000. Obviously, everybody looked at the emails and the repairs and what has, is rebuild on the Transformers. And so, as someone I discussed, the way things are, if he waits two weeks, it might put you a year out, but if you can get it done that day, it might only put you six months out, so... What do we need to do? Do we have to have a resolution to raise that?
Yes, to change the purchasing ordinance. So I can look, I can get that. I can get with Derek and get that revised, probably.
So I...
What do you want the spending limit to be?
I would say $30,000.
Well, remind him what he asked for already.
The prices of things going up, we've talked about this too on the phone, him and I, and you know, what, $20,000 used to buy, $40,000 barely buys it now. And some of this stuff like that Transformer, yeah, he's gotta get that fixed and different things, so I would have no problem with even going to 40. We might could visit it later on some other time, but...
Who does this apply to, though?
Jamie.
Only Jamie, too.
No.
And that's...
The purchasing ordinance. Yeah, so we would need to revise it to say that the utility superintendent would have the ability for that.
I'm more comfortable.
The rest of them would stay at...
I'm more comfortable with that, and I would like to add that I'm very comfortable with what Randy said as long as it's related to town utilities, infrastructure items, other items that normally go through the five-year plan, vehicles, those kind of things. I would, you know, I understand maintenance costs some money, and I'm okay with a smaller spending limit. Maybe not as small as it is today, but, you know, I don't know if that needs to be 40, $40,000, but...
You wanted to say anything other than capital projects? Like, you wanted to say maintenance only? Because that...
Well, I update you when I'm buying stuff, you know? This is just to get things going, so it's not... I get what you're saying, but, you know...
I just, I like the way we do the five, you know, I actually like that process of how we do those things. I am totally comfortable with the utilities, infrastructure type stuff.
Yeah, because some of this stuff he has to get, like George was saying, if you buy it today, you may only be six months out. Tomorrow will put you, so he can't just keep dragging his feet or waiting for us to say, hey.
No, I'm in total agreement with that, as long as we just have some kind of understanding there, kind of. Yeah, other than that, I'm fine. And it only applies to Jamie.
Right, applies to utility superintendent.
And if you're not comfortable with the 40, we could cut like the 35.
No, I'm comfortable with the 40 for Transformers, that kind of stuff, you know? If we're gonna talk about it, normally, we should do vehicles and those kind of things in a different kind of a process. So I'm okay. I just wanna make sure that's out there on the record.
I just wanted to make sure you felt...
Yep.
You can buy a truck for $40,000, okay?
Nice, six maybe.
Is there some way we could, if you don't wanna put those limits like that on her, that if Jamie, just like we sent out an email, is it legal to have three board members, okay, at the email? And let them spend that money the same day?
I'd rather be in the ordinance. That's a better way to have it, and I think, I'm hearing the gist of this is that I get where you're at, that like, I need to act quicker than the next meeting. But I think he's in a unique position to have to be able to do that. And that's fine, I just, I guess you don't want...
Well, it could fall under, just like you, anything you order, I mean, you know? You gotta lock it in at 24 hours or something to get that price, because, you know, the price is going up.
Right, but you don't want a deputy clerk treasurer ordering something for $38,000?
No, 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 it would be the superintendent. You don't, you don't put that... But I hate to limit...
I'm fine.
Utilities.
We're only doing this for utilities, and you wanna leave everything else the same.
Yes.
Utility superintendent, that position.
Right, you know, what happens if Jamie's gone for two weeks?
Then we amend the ordinance.
Do you want it to be dug?
Well, when Jamie's gone, I guess the utility superintendent collect that.
System. I say no.
No, yeah, I'm not gonna, I want it to be Jamie only.
So you superintendent, yeah.
Now, you're basing this ordinance under Jamie, and I trust Jamie implicitly, but you gotta realize that this ordinance being changed will be changed for any superintendent that you would have.
Yeah, we can change, or this council can change it later to address that.
No, and I understand that, I'm just...
But I totally agree with Jamie's concerns, and I agree with everybody else up here. I just, that was my only caveat, so... Yep, we're good. I'm fine with $40,000.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion to allow the utility superintendent raise the spending limit to $40,000 for utility use only.
One second, Pat.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to allow the utility superintendent to raise his utility spending to amount of $40,000 for utility repairs or whatever he needs to have done. Any further comment on that? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Any other old business?
I've got a couple things.
Go ahead.
Well, that Transformer you were just talking about, I need to get that on order. I found a company that, they're telling me they can fix it 12 to 16 weeks, so I wanna get that going. The price on that repair is $19,656.
So are you gonna get that one repaired and let's order a new one?
No, I want it back up in stock, so I'm gonna have to put that in there while this is waiting, but you know, that's the thing, if I buy a new one, they're two years out right now. So it just makes sense to get this fixed and get it back quick, hopefully quick. So I looked at buying a smaller one. We could actually put a smaller one in there, but same thing. It's two years out and almost $40,000 for a smaller one, so might as well just keep what we got.
And the thing is, you put a smaller one in, in the waste, and things are growing out there, that'll be outdated then. Where are we at? We have to go buy another one anyhow, so...
Yeah, they're hard to get, so...
Yep. We need to discuss the top on the water reservoir?
Yeah. I'm still getting prices on that, but be thinking about $60,000. That looks like where we're gonna be, somewhere in there. Now, that's the building where the pumps are and the water reservoir, the top of that too, so...
It's the whole.
It's the whole thing, yeah.
The whole thing is basically, how old is that?
I think it was put up in the 70s.
So that's original roof?
Yeah, yeah. 78?
My grandpa would have still been here, yeah.
I think, I think about 77, 78, 'cause that's when I Tenco was put in, or...
Lot dill.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would've been about to 76, 77 sometime.
And redoing it with the way that it is is a better deal than trying to do some other kind of roof that...
It doesn't sound like there's a whole lot of options with that concrete being what it is. I don't think it's gonna be the gravel again. They've got something different now, and they're gonna slope it from what I'm talking, or from who I'm talking to. Slope it a little bit so water gets away a little better, but the same concept, basically, is what's there.
Could just put screens in it, save the water. Use the rainwater.
But I've got one quote right now. I've got, I talked to somebody today, they're coming at the end of the week, and I was supposed to have another one today. The problem is with those flat roofs, not everybody does them. It's kind of specialized.
Use a bike quote.
Then the other, the other thing I have, I sent you an email about this a little bit, is we've got a company looking into solar in town, so I'm looking into that. I don't know.
I think we should have a workshop to discuss that when you get more information. That's just my take on it. I would like to have a, I think the council and yourself. And once we get some further information, then possibly even have a follow-up meeting with the...
Well, I need to have, they've got a meeting on the 29th, and they want information for that, so we'll have to do it at the next meeting. I should have information either later this week or early next week. I should have almost everything I need by that point.
Randy, we have a workshop before the next meeting, don't we?
Yes.
Can we just plan on talking about that stuff at the workshop at the next meeting, then?
Good. At 6?
Yeah. I just think that it'd be better to do at least a planned part of that in a workshop.
It is gonna affect us, so...
That's what I'm looking into right now, to see how much. So I should have those numbers by then.
That comes from Solville or somebody?
Yep, they're part of it, and I've talked to input and getting a lot of input on it, so...
Okay.
Because of the current purchase.
So do we need to, do I need to have a vote on that Transformer, or we get with what?
Yeah, what we've been talking about.
Oh, you were, okay.
We need a vote.
We technically don't have the ordinance in effect yet, but...
We need a vote to do the Transformer, those type of...
I'm making a motion to allow the utility superintendent to get one Transformer repaired and order another one that has a two-year wait.
I don't need to order one.
You sure?
I have one in stock.
Okay.
So when this comes back, I'll still have one in stock.
Oh, all right.
I just need to get this one repaired.
Change my motion to state to get the current Transformer repaired.
One second, Pat.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to allow utility superintendent to get the current Transformer that's bad repaired. Any further comment on this? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? There you go.
Okay, that's all I have.
Anything else? Anybody else? Don't you do that. All right, let's jump into new business. Salary ordinance 2022-06. And this is...
Just the yellow stuff, Lisa?
Just the yellow stuff. So the park board, as you know, wages have gone up, so we needed to up the price range of the wages for the park employee. That's the only change. And it, we made it retroactive back to March 17th. He started on the 21st, so we started it at that payroll. It's just that, it's the range in his salary. Or their salaries, because there's more than one person that falls under park.
Yeah, so the part-time is going from, is gonna have a range from 11 to 20, and the seasonal is from 12 to 18.
Right.
That's kind of in the same parameters of what we've done, there's some other things in the salary ordinance when we redid it a year ago.
And then the other part is to change, to make it retroactive to March 17th.
I make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 2022-06. Let's cut changes on all three readings.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and pass on all three readings. Salary ordinance 2022-06 for the salary ordinance. Any further comments?
Yes, before you vote. We need to start doing this a little differently, or I'll say better for certain statute. The first, we need to break our votes down, okay? In terms of suspending the rules, that's one vote. It has to be unanimous. The next vote has to pass by a two-thirds majority of the elected officials. So when we do it all at once, as long as we're unanimous, that's all fine. But the better practice would be to, I move to suspend the rules to entertain passing the motion on three readings. Vote. And so long as that's unanimous, then we can move forward. Then the next vote is to pass the ordinance on all three readings, and that has to be passed by a two-thirds vote. So we've not been doing that exactly according to Hall of Oil, but we need to start probably paying attention to that.
We bad?
So would that maybe an amended motion to...
How about me just withdrawing my motion?
Okay.
Now I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
And pass on the first reading, and then go into the second and third?
No, suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules and the pass on all three readings. Correct.
One second.
Okay, so now the motion is to suspend the rules and pass on all three readings. Salary ordinance 2022-06. Any further comments on that? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
I make a motion to pass salary ordinance 2022-06 on all three readings.
Now we have a motion and a second to pass salary ordinance 2022-06 on all three readings. Any further comments on that? That's not all. Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? See the people coming in.
Hi, Kim.
How you doing, George?
We good, myself.
It's not bad.
Did you come for anything particular? We're quite far ways down the agenda, but I'll stop and...
I came to complain about the truckers, they're on Dewey Street. The ones coming from Altrin and Sequel. Because they turn north and on the wrong way, where there's no trucks on that road. I've asked for years for there to be a sign right there above the stop sign, where as soon as they pull that corner, they can see they shouldn't be heading north. And I don't know how many times I'm out there telling the trucks.
And turning north, then?
They'll come down Dewey from Altrin, and they'll turn north and back towards 10th. And they run and hit my rocks, push them rocks up into my yard. I've got tracks in my yard where they hit the rocks, went over the rocks, and tracked in the yard. And when they come from the south off of 10, they'll be heading south. They'll turn off of 10, head south, and come down the road, and then turn and swing into it and cut into my yard. I mean, your signs aren't big enough. I've asked for this for over 10 years, for somebody to do something with it.
Well, we just put some new signs up along here. Jamie, we got any more of those signs?
We'll have to get some.
Sounds like we need one out there.
Yeah, we, they don't, I don't know why they would even turn north. I don't know how they're gonna get across them tracks. But, yeah.
There's been a truck that's got, one or two that's got stuck. They dragged my rocks halfway down the road, where the towns had to come and push it back in my yard. rocks halfway down the road, where the towns had to come and push it back in my yard, or they just push it up there wherever they want.
I will also contact Cory, the police chief, and ask him to keep an eye on that, that's, that's clear to violation, that's no trucks.
I know.
So, I will ask them to keep an eye on that.
We'll get it posted, we'll get it posted better, Kim.
I appreciate it, 'cause I've even talked to Mark McIntyre, and he says he has truckers pulling into his lot, thinking he's Altrin.
Yeah.
'Cause their GPSs don't take them to the right place.
And trucker GPS.
And they aren't, you know, I've, I've been driving truck for fifteen years, and I, I guess I'm not saying I'm smarter than anybody, but when GPS doesn't agree with what I think's right, I just override the thing, now, why they can't do that, I don't know, I would know that I couldn't turn and go down this little road if there's a sign there, but they'll do it anyhow, I don't understand, some people just do whatever.
I'm New York City, I don't care if there's no truck, I'm sorry.
A lot of them are doing good if they can speak English, 'cause many a times I went out there and told them where they're going, 'cause they'll stop, that's where I'm being dazed and confused and not know what they're doing. Jamie, you wanna?
The only, the only problem with that stretch of road there, it's not all our road, that's county road to the tracks.
From Dewey to the tracks is county?
Yeah, yeah.
Ooh, yeah.
So, what do we need to do then with the county?
Want me to call Jason?
You can, or I can call Jason.
I'm calling tomorrow.
Good.
But also, as they're coming in off of Thirty-One, on Seventeenth Road, heading towards the north, when they turn, they're breaking down that new road there, 'cause they're cutting into my yard at least two foot, for their tire tracks are coming in, and it's breaking down the edges of that new road. I don't know what to do there, I'd like to stick something there so they don't hit it, but I'd be moving it out all the time.
Is there anything we could do to, Jimmy, to block them corners and make it quick?
Well, part of the problem is, we need to look at that road and see how wide it is, because I think those rocks are actually kind of in the easement area there, in the road, that road's not just where the road is, it stretches out, so if you look on the other side of the road, I moved those poles out probably fifteen, twenty feet, those are in the easement all the way down through there, and we have the same thing on the other side, so there is actually more room, especially on those corners, to make that turn.
No, they've shoved them rocks up in the yard, half of them's too big, I can't even move them, so they're stuck where they're at. But I would appreciate if something could be done.
You'll look into it, I promise you that. We'll, we'll, and we will get it marked.
I appreciate it.
That's not a problem, anything else?
Nope, that was all, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Can we help you, Pam? You just hear the listen, okay?
Not yet.
Meeting starts at seven this year.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so you're late, see? Yes, they do start at seven this year.
I didn't know. Did you get your newsletter? I did, but I don't have to call Sam.
Yeah. I don't have this next year.
Well, I won't be late.
I don't have it in my-
Okay, the next thing is the power tracker, and I don't know if you've got it on your computer, I don't have it on mine either, Sean doesn't have it, but it's resolution twenty twenty-two oh-seven, uh, this is a power tracker, we do this pretty often, uh, it's a rate adjustment, and, uh, rate adjustment applicable to the above-listed rate schedule, and it looks like it's going up this time, if I'm reading this right, point zero 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 six four one per kilowatt per month.
No, yeah, it's going up this time, it's not a negative anymore, and actually, I think it went down from last time a little bit, it was point zero zero eight something last time, so it did go down a little bit, but it's still not a negative number.
Right.
And I apologize, I put it in the Dropbox this afternoon, Candy had it on my desk, and she's like, did you remember to use the power tracker, we could pass, I mean, if you don't wanna pass it, we can wait till next meeting, if you wanna look it over, it just has to be done before the end of April.
Same, same old same, so it doesn't matter, but if the majority decides they wanna do.
Okay, I'll just wander you.
I just looked at the back page.
It's went down from the, you pointed before, even though it's not a negative number, it's still decreased technically.
In a way, though it could've been more.
Two oh-six. I'm gonna, was it, I'm making a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero-seven?
Before anybody's seconded, like, for any people who have it.
Sorry, I didn't get that on your Dropbox. No, it's me, I just can't get any help. Oh, sorry, we're just saying.
You did with this?
One second, Pat.
All right, we have a motion and a second to pass resolution twenty twenty-two oh-seven, power tracker, any further comment on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Power tracker is passed, any other new business? Mark, you got anything new that's worthwhile? We cut the ribbon at the park today in the wind.
We did, thank you all for coming.
Nothing else?
Chuck?
Chuck, you got anything new?
No, just, uh, had a meeting this morning with, uh, Mark, Lisa, and Jamie, we're talking about the, getting a little more work out about the subdivision going in, Mark's working on that, gotta get back with us and see where we can move that forward as far as the advertising, we're getting some more work out with that, so. I didn't wanna steal that from you, Mark, but that's all I got.
I do have a little piece of information, um, Marshall Kennedy Historical Society Museum, they are doing a thing about artists, and they have asked for like, a lot of the pictures up on the wall right now, so they can make a new display for the town, their museum, so I've already contacted Mark about that, and he's going to get some pictures for them.
Do they need like a mannequin to sit in there?
If you want to, go ahead.
Yeah, Lisa, they're for-
Eric, can you get some pictures from them, some older pictures from them? Maybe we could swap pictures.
Oh.
We'll give them some new ones, maybe you can ask offhand the older ones.
She said something about the movie?
Yeah.
Movie theater or something, Mark, was it?
The old movie theater downtown?
Yeah, she said something, they're trying to do something about the old movie theater, if anybody had any vote or something.
Well, we had a movie, we had a theater, and we had an opera house, so.
It was about movies, theater.
Okay, well, the movie theater building is Dustin's.
Oh, okay.
So, if, you know, they-
We're outside behind them.
Yeah, they, we need to contact Dustin's, um, on that one.
I'll give you the answer.
Yeah. They're running up, and, yeah. We had a, or, and, we just, the hot cars, and we had the sunblock.
Okay, that's an opera.
An opera house, yes.
The Artisan.
Yeah, we could, yeah, we were doing that now, so.
We didn't have much of an opera, we had a hospital.
Yeah.
Yeah, hospital.
A lot of the buildings downtown were really old, so.
Any ideas?
Oh, yeah.
They never had one? Oh, yeah, no. Yeah, it's, um, when they put the festival building, the festival building.
Okay.
Just an announcement, um, as you see the sign outside, the posters are up, we just got them up next Saturday, the sixteenth, the party, the fire department association, Parks Fire Association is putting on a free will Easter breakfast down at Fairgrounds from seven to eleven. A lot of people show up, it's free, obviously, I said a free will donation, and the Leos and, who else?
Elevate Argus.
Elevate Argus is putting on the Easter egg hunt at the Memorial Park afterwards.
The Easter bunny.
No, wait, the Easter bunny will be there.
No dough.
Easter egg hunts, fine.
Be that way, right?
I think we need to look into that for next year.
You like candy just as well as-
It's not candy, I want any eggs.
Okay, no more new business? One, two, three, go, claims.
Okay, so you have in front of you claims from March twelfth of twenty twenty-two to April fourth, um, they total seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-two cents.
Looking through the claims, and I saw a new part-time person, it was a phone stiffer, or a name I've never seen before, who is that?
For the park.
For the park, we hired two people for the park.
Okay.
And they are entitled to the part-time phone stipends.
That's for the time plot, that's why.
Right, that's new, we just put that in.
Yeah.
Don't get me started.
I'm making a motion to pass the claims. The docket for four six twenty twenty-two, claims are from three twelve twenty twenty-two to four four twenty twenty-two, amount of seven hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-two cents.
We have a motion and a second to pass the claims from March twelfth twenty twenty-two to April fourth twenty twenty-two, any further comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Say aye.
Make a motion to-
You want me to do?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Opposed to the second to adjourn?
He's waiting on me.
Say aye, say aye.